Good evening. I'd like to call the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education meeting for January 12, 2015 to order. Thank you all for coming out on this, once again, chilly evening. We sure appreciate it. Will you please join me this evening in a moment of silence? And now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And the first item on our agenda tonight is the mission statement. And I'm going to ask, who should read it tonight? Lyle, do you want to read it? Thank you.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Lyle. Well, first up tonight, we have a donation. I believe Al Pace is here. We have a donation from the Richard Blue Meyer Estate. And we'd love to hear from you. Blue Meyer. Pardon me, I apologize.
That's okay. Well, we're very honored to be here this evening.
Al, will you punch your, make sure the green light's on, on your?
There we go.
Yay.
I guess we're honored to be here tonight to ask you to accept a donation from the Richard Blue Meyer Estate. Most of you are very aware of Richard through the years and all the associations he has had with the Cedar Valley for forty-plus years with athletics, multiple halls of fame. Many of you saw him at baseball games and basketball games as an official, which I oftentimes think we forget about. So not only, sometimes I joked with him once, not only did he sell us the products when he was at Kraft Cochran, he was probably also figuring out what products were wrong all those years as he was chasing after kids on the basketball court. But he was an ardent fan of what I would say, all things East High. And we saw him really at everything throughout the years. And so we're very honored tonight to have his daughter with us. Susan Robertson is here tonight. Through his generous donation, the estate has provided us with $3,700 that we would ask that you accept and that we would like to put towards the general athletic fund. One of the things that we have talked about is we are looking at purchasing a new scoreboard. And so that's something that Susan and I talked about, and she thought that would be a tremendous honor for not only the family, but also for the athletes and the community at East High. So that's something that we have talked about, possibly the money going towards.
Excellent. Susan, do you want to say anything? Not to put you on the spot, you don't have to.
Well, I'm going to give away that I'm here with Ms. Brandt. My kids said, is Ms. Brandt going to be there tonight? And I said, well, yes, Mrs. Lindeman probably will. But my boys had her for principal at Union Middle School, so I hate her for years ago.
And they were never in trouble.
No, probably not.
They're wonderful.
She was awesome, and you guys are very lucky to have her in the capacity that you do. But yeah, my dad, Richard, passed away a little over a year ago, but he was very, very passionate and proud of the Waterloo metro, you know, with your sports and stuff. And of course, he had to go to Waterloo Warrior stuff for my kids and for Union Athletics, but all the Waterloo things. And was especially proud of, you know, of East High and just hated it when he missed anything. He appreciated and was proud of all of your schools, but his heart was really with East High. So I'm excited that they could use the money for something, and like I said, I'm honored to be here on his behalf, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Let's get this motion on the table. So the Board of Education approves and accepts and acknowledges with gratitude this donation in the amount of $3,700 from the Richard Blue Meyer Estate. Is there a second? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you very much.
And I look forward to seeing the scoreboard.
I just wanted to tell you, you look a lot like your dad. And I just, I remember him because he officiated a lot of my games, but then he lived downtown in the Russell Lamson Building, and I worked downtown, and he came to our office a lot. And he was just a wonderful man, and you look a lot like him. So thank you very much for his tribute, and I think he would really like that his name would be on a scoreboard.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Well, the next item on our agenda is another donation, and I believe Crystal's here this evening. We can go ahead and get that motion on the table, and that is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge the R.J. McElroy Trust Excellence in Education Grants in the amount of $5,852.72.
So moved.
Thanks, and a second?
Second.
Crystal, you want to give us a little bit of information?
Absolutely. So every year, teachers in Blackhawk County can apply for a, basically it's a teacher enrichment grant to help them further the programs that they're offering to their students. And this year, we were very lucky to have a number of our buildings, actually twelve school buildings were awarded. Some of them were group projects that they had applied for, which I think is really great. It shows what we have been doing in the district, that we're really starting to work together, whether it's teacher teams or district-wide teams. The athletics is, are not athletics, but actually the school education teachers have been doing a lot to revamp their curriculum, and so they're looking for some additional resources for that. And a lot of the elementary and middle school are really focused on literacy, which I think is a wonderful example of them trying to further what we are already doing. So for, part of the great thing about these grants is that the teachers now, they were notified at the end of December, they can immediately start to purchase the items that they need. And I know for Kingsley especially, that was one thing that Ms. Plitz had emailed me back and said, we are purchasing our stuff right away because we are so excited to start using it. So I mean, it's something that's very important to them, and we're very lucky to have these teachers in our district to do this for our students.
And just to note, for those of you who don't have the exhibit in front of you, because we do, we have, but there are twelve buildings that are represented here, which is really great. So please make sure that you pass our thanks on to R.J. McElroy, too.
Thank you.
Anything else? Then all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Now I need that one thing to read. Now we're moving on to our next item, is information from individuals and delegations. So anyone here tonight that would like to speak publicly to the board, I would like to remind each speaker, whether you represent yourself or a group, that you have three minutes to speak during this portion of the meeting. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your remarks immediately. Waterloo is a national leader in character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Throughout our meeting, we commit ourselves to these principles. At no time is it appropriate here to criticize the job performance of a specific employee of the district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through the proper channels and not in this public forum. So with that, I would like to invite anyone who wishes to speak to come to the microphone, and please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Nina. My address is 1904 East Mitchell Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa, 50702. I am a senior at West High, and today I am speaking on the topic of the newly implemented weighted grading system. This school year is the first in which a weighted grading system has been implemented among high schools in the district. Although this system is expected to positively transform the graduating classes of 2008 and on, I and many of my peers found that its implementation to the senior class has had adverse effects in our college and scholarship applications. Prior to this switch, student transcripts reflected an unweighted cumulative GPA and its corresponding class rank. Since first semester grades of the new system have been posted, it is in these two areas where we find trouble. Currently, no numeric distinction has been made between our weighted and unweighted GPAs on the transcripts and the respective class rankings, inaccurately reflecting the unweighted GPAs of each student having taken an AP or IB class this semester of the 2014-2015 school year. Secondly, our weighted GPA is a poor calculation, as 4.0 students who have gone above and beyond by taking additional classes suffer in this area due to unweighted class letter grades of an A weighing down their cumulative GPA, hence bringing down one's class rank. Both of these issues make it impossible to truthfully answer the question over GPA on any college or scholarship application. Since neither of the two GPAs portray the actual GPA, we have earned cumulatively over four years of high school. Because the GPAs are used to determine class rank, I, along with other valedictorians, are having trouble reporting on applications that our class rank is one, when in fact the class rank of all valedictorians this year was recently reordered by the flawed weighted grading system. I applied to colleges before winter break, and now I'm expected to send in a new updated transcript, which includes my semester grades to the institutions. But my current transcript is inaccurate, therefore containing conflicting information than what I first reported while applying to college. As a valedictorian, I reported my class rank as one. My transcript, on the other hand, calculates my rank as four. A rank of four out of 357 means that I am no longer even in the top 1% of my class, which is wildly inaccurate of my valedictorian standing. Furthermore, there is no note in the comments section of my transcript which explains these inaccuracies, nor is there a note indicating to colleges that a switch in the grading system has been made, partway through my high school education. Due to these issues, I am at a standstill. I cannot proceed to send my transcript to prospective colleges, nor can I continue to apply to scholarships. I present these issues to the board today in the hopes that I may have the board's aid in solving these problems, either by fixing and issuing new transcripts as soon as possible as application deadlines are quickly approaching, or to reconsider the new grading system's implementation to the senior class entirely this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Nina.
Sydney Weldon, 4860 Winghaven Drive, Waterloo, Iowa, 50701. Hello, my name is Sydney, and I'm another valedictorian that has been severely affected by the poorly timed weighted grade implementation. On Thursday of last week, I submitted a transcript mailing form for the colleges I'm applying to. All three colleges have deadlines by this Thursday, January 15, and I needed to submit them early so they would arrive on time. However, I didn't notice until after the fact that there were serious discrepancies between the information I submitted on my common application and the information on my transcript. I submitted that I was one of 357 students and that grades were not weighted, which up until last week was accurate. Since the transcripts haven't updated, I have been moved to fifth in my class, and I have a weighted and unweighted GPA of 4.056. Without the notes regarding the change in the system in the comments section of my transcript, which I was told would be included, colleges have no way of knowing what is true. The weighted scale system is harming and extremely inconvenient for hard-working seniors. Having taken two AP classes last year and three this year, my previous three years of high school seemed to be disregarded with the system taking place my final year of high school. I've had a full schedule all four years of high school, and I've had two years of summer school totaling five credits outside the academic year. Now I'm getting punished in terms of class rank because I have 55 credits, while my peers in front of me have a higher GPAs, but a total, smaller total credit summary. I feel that I should not be responsible for contacting the colleges regarding the changes because the error is not mine to correct. Time is fleeting for accurate information to be sent in, and this is not a matter to be taken lightly. I would sincerely appreciate if something would be done about this serious issue as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Sydney.
Hannah Kinney, 403 Crest Ridge Drive, 50702. No, okay, that's good. Okay, you're good. Sorry, you're good. Mine's short and sweet because they already covered most of the problems with it. I just have a couple of notes. From my awareness, I guess, you can't combine weighted and unweighted grades, especially when it's a three-to-one ratio of years in high school. And that's why one of the major problems is both of our grades, weighted and unweighted, say, mine personally says 4.059, which technically they should say weighted is 4.5 and unweighted is 4.0, and they should be two totally separate grades, which I think most of you guys are aware of by now, yeah. And one of my main problems is there's kids who have a 3.95 who are very close to having a 4.0, and some of them with the combination have been risen to the 4.0 status. And I know some valedictorians, along with myself, are worried if they're going to be raised to that, are they back to valedictorianship because they've already gotten, they've gotten a B before, and if we're just going to change it to, if you've gotten all As and you're shaking your head no, so I'm assuming we're good with this conversation? Thank you.
Thank all three of you. Is there, is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? And if I may, just with leisure, just to the three of you, thank you for coming and speaking tonight and doing it so eloquently. I know it's hard to do, and it's a little nerve-wracking, and I appreciate it. It is something that had been brought to my attention, and I know that I've spoken with Dr. Lindeman, and I know that you've spoken to Dr. Manolte, too, about it this evening. And so thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I can rest assured that we're going to get it fixed. As I understand it, the weighted grades were on a two-year phase-in, and so they would not be affecting the senior class adversely, as you're speaking of. So I know that it's important, and I get it. I've got a senior, too. I understand exactly how important all that is. So you have my word, and I think everybody up here that will make sure we take care of it. And if you have something else you want to say about that, go right in.
Yeah. I also really appreciate you coming. And this is exactly, you know, you need to let us know when there's something that needs to be corrected, because that's always our desire. And I would encourage you, and actually anyone who is interested in this, to go, to look at the policy 504.22, 504.22, because it's laid out in there that this would not impact the graduating class until the graduating class of 2018. And so obviously, this is a technical glitch that we'll have to, we'll have to figure out. I just became aware of the issue on the transcript about five minutes ago, so I haven't fixed it yet, but I'm going to be right, I promise. We're going to be on it right away and make sure that we get that taken care of. The sooner you can let us know, the, and I don't know, maybe you just discovered it today as well, so this is, you know, a perfect chance for you to let us know. We don't know those unless, those issues, we don't, I mean, I wasn't pulling anybody's transcript today, so I didn't notice that, but we're going to get it fixed so that you can get, so that you can get your transcript printed, so that you can get it turned in. The other thing I would offer to you is, because it's obviously been an inconvenience for you, we, the school district would contact any colleges on your behalf. So I'm going to make that offer, and I'm actually going to have the principal announce that. So any students who aren't here tonight, or maybe who aren't watching, although I'm sure everyone's watching, because this is a very important meeting, we will, we will do that on your behalf, just because it makes it a little more official if they get something from us. So thanks for letting us know, we're going to get it fixed ASAP.
Thank you.
So we need to make it clear what, how to fix the junior class as well, right?
Oh, yeah. And I'm sure that once we fix it in the system, it will be fixed for anybody, because this does, I mean, by policy, it says valedictorian's salutatorium status, starting with the graduating class of 2018, and that is policy. That is policy, so that is something we would definitely adhere to. Okay?
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda this evening, our consent agenda consists of five items, the minutes of the December 8, 2014 regular board meeting, the personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings, the labor negotiations team, and the appointment of a board member to the Blackhawk County Conference Board. Are there any items that any of you would like to see removed?
G, please.
Item G. Anything else? That being said, we can go ahead and vote on the four items, omitting item G. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And I need a motion to put that consent agenda on the...
So moved.
Thank you. A second. Okay, now everyone that would like to approve the consent agenda with the omission of item G, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye, motion carries. Item G is on page 29.
The Board of Education approved the labor negotiations team and the process as outlined.
Can I get the...
It would be the recommendation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Wrong page.
That's okay.
Recommendation, the Board of Education approved the appointment of Lyle Schmidt to the Blackhawk County Conference Board.
So moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The discussion, Lyle?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment what the conference board is. It's really under the Blackhawk County Board Supervisors and motions that are made and so far as they're approved or not by the board supervisors. The conference board is, I would say, a quasi-independent organization. Basically, the assessor's office has a separate budget, and that's acted on through the representatives of the conference board. The representatives include someone from each of the cities within the county, someone within the various school districts within the county. So there's a number of set organizations that are represented on the conference board. And so Waterloo Community Schools is one of those. And I've been on that for several years, and I'm willing to serve another year. I think there's only two regularly scheduled meetings, but then there's often a couple special meetings during the year as well. The one project that might affect us this coming year is that last year, or maybe even the year before, it was approved to, for the county to purchase a scanning system to scan all the buildings and, in order to really find out, to make sure that the number of buildings and their configuration and their size is accurate on the assessment rolls, basically. But as part of this, it also allows any organization to go in on their own costs, and I believe the cost to the school district would be about $20,000, to videotape inside the building for purposes of security, if they wish to. So we might want to consider that at maybe, maybe our high schools or something. But basically, it's if, if the police or the fire department, the sheriff's department needed to get the inside profile of a building because of some, you know, incident of some kind, why they could do that. But that would require the school district to literally walk the halls with a camera and have that recorded. So I don't know if we're going to do that or not, but it was a new thing that's just being installed right now that will enable that if we choose to do that. So that's the one thing that does potentially affect the schools.
Anything else, Lyle?
No.
Thank you for giving us a little background on that, I appreciate it. So that motion's on the table. All those in favor of approving that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries. So with that, we'll move on to board policy changes. It's a first reading for these tonight, and they are on page 30, it's Exhibit H. And I believe Tara Thomas is coming up to maybe give a little background.
Thank you, Shanley. There's nothing significant other than striking the word "requires" and changing it to "supports", and then changing cabinet to district leadership team to reflect the current reference to that group.
Otherwise, it looks pretty straightforward.
Yes, nothing's changing.
Does anybody have any questions for Tara on that?
Oh, and changing staff to department.
Okay.
For technology.
Right. So basically, just those three words.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Thanks, Tara. We'll look forward to approving this in another...
Week.
Two weeks, when we get it back. Now we'll move on to the next item on our agenda is item I on page 32. It's Chromebook and iPad purchases, and I believe I've seen Matt O'Brien out there in the audience. We can go ahead and get the motion on the table here. The Board of Education approved the purchase of 208 Chromebooks and 45 iPad Airs at a total cost of $78,915.96. Can I get that motion on the table?
So moved.
Thanks, and a second?
Thanks, Sue.
Matt, take it away.
Well, good evening. We're certainly thankful for the board recognizing that technology can certainly serve as an excellent tool to increase student engagement and student achievement. And as the board is aware, we have a plan for equity, where we ensure that all of our students and all of our schools have equitable access to technology. This is something that is kind of above and beyond that, really with the goal of trying to empower teachers that are ready, willing, and able to serve as champions for effective use of technology within the schools. We would like to give them the tools to be able to do so, to, as I mentioned, champion and kind of build a, more of a grassroots effort towards, moving towards more ubiquitous usage, proper usage of technology as a tool in our classrooms. So that's, that's what is before you tonight. We, to that end, then invited all of our teachers across the district to apply for a classroom set of devices of either Chromebooks or iPads, and we're very impressed with the response we got back. We got 46 applications, which was a huge response and more, I think that was the highest number from past times that we've offered opportunities similar to this. So we were certainly happy about that. We chose Chromebooks and iPads based off of what we've been hearing from other school districts, as well as from our own experiences. And as many of the board members are aware, we've done some past, what we've called pilots, where we've looked at different forms of technology in kind of a one-to-one ratio within classrooms, just to see how those devices are beneficial in our classrooms. And really, the feedback that we got from those was that iPads, in most cases, are really geared maybe more towards lower elementary, with Chromebooks being more beneficial at the secondary levels as well as upper elementary. So that's what we geared this round of grant applications for. So again, out of the 46 applications, we did have a pretty difficult task in front of us to try to narrow that down to those that we were going to choose to fund. And I'm thankful to a team that consisted of myself, as well as some ed services members that kind of waded through those, and we actually used a four-part rubric where we ranked all of 46 of the applications, and through that process, nine of those rose to the top, and those are the ones that are before you tonight that we're asking for funding for. So as an aside, I do have to give a special thank you to the ed services team members that were a piece of that. So thanks to Crystal Buzza, Ron Moreland, Angela Hewitt, and Debbie Lee, who, along with myself, reviewed those. So thankful for their input, and we're excited to have this before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
What determined the number that we would end up supporting?
The number of, the number of grants that we awarded.
Yeah.
That's actually a very good question. We kind of had in our mind, just from a budgetary perspective, a range that we wanted to do. So what we did was, we actually went through and rated all of the applications, quite honestly, looked at those total scores, and then looked where that logical line was to draw the line. So quite honestly, those that are getting funded scored either an 11 out of 12 or a perfect 12 out of 12 from their ratings from the team that reviewed the applications.
So we did the same thing last year?
I think it was actually two years ago that we had Chromebooks, and then three, the first time we did kind of pilots was actually, I believe, three years ago now, time flies, when we did iPads. That was honestly when Chromebooks was not as common of a word as it is now. About two years ago... About two years ago, we did Chromebooks. And again, the goal, I would say, between those pilots, and this is a little bit different, the initial pilots, as I mentioned earlier, was really to look at how those devices could be potentially used as a vehicle, as a tool, to enhance student engagement and student achievement. We're at the point now where we want to look for ways that we can empower teachers to kind of just be those champions in the buildings to model effective technology integration. So that's why we're before you with this this evening.
What's the timeframe on this before they're in the students' hands?
Pending approval tonight. There, we'll get them ordered right away tonight or tomorrow. There's always a several-week shipment delay while we're just waiting for logistics for them to arrive, you know, another several days for us to get the devices set up. So we're probably looking at early February. I've told our grant folks that pending your approval tonight, to probably look for those in sometime in February, hopefully early February.
Thank you. Matt, just to clarify, budget-wise?
Yes.
You mentioned that lovely word.
Always a fun word.
So this is not new, this is not new above and beyond. This was money that you had budgeted, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So we budget every year for a pool of money for technology in the classroom, and the bulk of that money is used to replace equipment. We have a lifecycle replacement process that we use that money for. This is coming from that budgeted pool of money to kind of go a bit above and beyond that. Quite honestly, these devices, as you know, are quite a bit cheaper than standard desktops or laptops. So by offering these devices, which we can then also get in kids' hands, so within a classroom, we can have one device per student, we're able to do so much more cost-effectively.
That's great. And where, which fund does this come out of?
Right now, this is slated from general funds. Sometimes Mr. Coughlin is able, just kind of depending on PEPAL balances and et cetera, sometimes at the end of the year, he does a little bit of shifting, but right now, this is slated for general fund.
General fund, okay. Thank you.
And do you know, Matt, who received, which elementaries received the Chromebooks? I mean, the iPads?
Yeah, so the two element, actually the...
No, the time before, sorry.
Oh.
I didn't say that, like the initial grant.
Got you, the initial grant.
Yeah.
I don't have it off the top of my head. I know the initial iPads, we had several, I can remember several at Irving. I can certainly get that to you, Sue. I could rattle off a few, but I know my list would be incomplete, so I better not try. I can get that information to you.
That would be good. I'd just like to see.
Sure. I will say that our, when evaluating the applications, we're of course looking at the teacher and really what they put into the application, what they're actually using, you know, wanting to use a device for, the type of curriculum, et cetera. We've been fairly fortunate that the applications have been fairly spread out, and as you can see here, we have represented at least schools across the spectrum from elementary, middle, and high school, which was certainly a good thing. So I can say that we probably haven't hit every school at this point. I think that we've hit most, and it's fairly indicative of the applications that we've actually gotten. And I can recall that last time we did this, applications were pretty heavily skewed towards the middle school. In fact, Hoover, I think we had two or three awards, but in looking at kind of the distribution of the applications, that kind of coincided with where we got the application from. And obviously, it makes sense, too, that it's a larger school, so you would think that, you know, a larger portion then would be applying from there as well. So I'll certainly look, and I can email that to you.
Well, and I was just wondering, like, but the pre-K at kindergarten at Cunningham?
Yeah, this is, we've had certainly a lot of technology at pre-K before, but I will say that I know this is the first, I'm fairly certain this is the first time that we've actually funded a pre-K from this type of program, from a district-type of an award. So we're actually really excited. We actually had several applications from pre-K teachers this round, and the Cunningham one was excellent, so we were happy to be able to do that.
Yeah, I think that's cool.
It is, very cool.
Matt, are these purchases replacing outdated computers, or is this a standalone?
This is a standalone. This is above and beyond. So the funding that we're using for this is actually funding that we typically use for replacing outdated computers or, like I said, lifecycle replacement-type things. This is targeted to kind of go above and beyond our standard allotment, to give those teachers that are gung-ho and wanting to move forward an opportunity to do so.
So what do you see in the future here? I mean, neither of these are good investments or not, so you could extrapolate that out to say, okay, if they aren't, then we shouldn't be doing it. If they are, then we should do it for every classroom. Now, you did mention, you know, it's based on ready, willing, and able, I guess, to some extent, but still, it seems like very soon, there ought to be a tipping point where instead of expecting each recipient, each classroom teacher, to kind of customize, develop their own use for these, that you develop a standard support...
Yeah.
District-wide in place, and if it goes, then everybody should have one.
So just to be blunt and cut to the chase, I think really, Mr. Schmidt, what your question is, is when are we going one-to-one, right? Or that's kind of the root of your question. If we've deemed it to be appropriate, which this grant application seems to indicate that we have, then what are the next steps? And I totally agree with you. What I will say is that research on one-to-one initiatives, and just for anyone watching, when I refer to one-to-one, we're talking about basically one device per child. So rather than having carts or labs or things of that nature, you're talking about a ratio of one device, whether that's a tablet or a laptop or a laptop or a Chromebook, whatever that may be, one device kind of across the board per child, whether it be at a grade level or a building or in the entire district. And really, what research has shown with one-to-one is it can be an excellent tool towards increasing student engagement, student achievement, but only if it's done correctly. And when it's done correctly, that basically means that the district has invested towards doing the appropriate PD, and there's lots of other kind of pieces that go along with that. So just to back up a step, I think it's first, I think it's prudent that we all recognize that technology is awesome and has some fantastic potential for increasing student engagement, student achievement, and we've definitely seen that in our district, as have most districts. But technology is just the tool. It's just the vehicle. You know, technology can only make good instruction even better, or, you know, it can certainly cause a detriment as well. So I think we just need to first be cognizant of what technology is, that it's not just a silver bullet that we can't just throw, you know, a laptop or a Chromebook per kid and expect our test scores to rise. I think that, quite honestly, it's probably inevitable, as I believe you kind of alluded to, that at some point, we probably will be looking at some sort of a model, whether it's a BYOD, which is bring your own device, or a one-to-one ratio of district-supplied devices. I think that's inevitable, but we also want to be very thoughtful about that, and we also want to be very thoughtful of all the challenges and all the initiatives that our teachers have before them right now as well. And quite honestly, that's the goal behind this, is we think that we are kind of potentially moving in that sort of direction. Obviously, we want to do so very thoughtfully. We need to recognize that technology is just a tool, and then we want to make sure that we're realistic about it and know all of the challenges that our teachers are facing, all the things that are on their plates. We want to empower those teachers who are ready, willing, and able to take, you know, a tool on, with the hope that then, as we continue to move forward, they can serve as models and champions towards that progress. But we also want to be very deliberate about introducing anything new across the board that we're not ready to commit to, because that's what the research is really clear on, is that for that to be successful, we have to have that commitment.
I agree with you, Matt, because I read some of those articles, too, because technology can't replace a good teacher teaching.
Absolutely, yep.
It can be a supplement for her or him, but can't replace that person.
You mentioned the BYOD, bring your own device, and that really brings up a good point in that the way technology is advancing at such a fast rate, that five years from now, it might be common for kids to be carrying the same kind of device you're talking about with them on a daily basis anyway.
Absolutely.
So that's, you know, maybe we don't want to spend a lot of money until we know where the technology is going, too.
We want to be careful with that, too, because we want to remember that there's a huge technology gap based on socioeconomic status as well.
True. Well, and by doing that, those who can do and those who can't may be able to be supplied with such technology.
Well, I think you both actually took the words right out of my mouth, so I congratulate you for that. The other challenge, and we very well may look at BYOD, and quite honestly, I don't know if you're aware, but we have some iterations of BYOD going on in the district right now. It's certainly not business as usual. In other words, it's not everywhere, but we have particularly at the high school level, I can name off a, not off the top of my head, but I could certainly point you to some classrooms at West, for example, where the teacher is very much into that model, either having kids text in responses via cell phones or things of that nature. I think that Tara's office has even done a video feature on one of those. So we certainly have pieces of that as well. Angela was very wise in saying, you know, obviously, we are an urban district and we have a very real digital divide. We need to be cognizant with that model. The other challenge that that model potentially faces is just a PD challenge for our teachers in supporting a myriad of devices, and we just need to be cognizant of those pieces as well. So that's certainly all conversations that we have had and will continue to have.
It seems like they're more likely to be successful if the support structure is behind them. And so in this case, I mean, do we, I assume we have, like, help desk support, but is there anything to help integrate these into lesson plans? I mean, is this individual teacher kind of on their own, or is there sharing, well, I'm using them this way? I mean, it seems like they're more likely to be successful when there's a support structure behind them.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. So two points I would make to that. First is, we really are at the level where we're deliberately looking for in the application self-starters, because that's one of the things that we're trying to build with that, is to ensure we're building that foundation that that sharing can take place. In fact, one of the questions in the application that we posed to teachers that were applying for this was along the lines of how they could potentially share or model or share through PD, you know, their experiences to the rest of their staff. So that's one of the goals behind this, is self-starters that then can have that foundation to share that. We certainly have other supports in place as well. We've been trying to pour some PD resources into our teacher, librarian, media specialists, that type of position, so that's something that's been ongoing. Ron Moreland, our instructional technology person, certainly has worked with them and will work with these folks as well. And quite honestly, between our help desks, between the teachers themselves, kind of just naturally grassroots collaborating, because these are those teachers that have that desire and the ability, as well as our other structures that we put in place, I'm confident that these folks can be successful. The challenge is, as you pointed out earlier, how, if we decide that this is something we want to expand, then we want to make sure that those resources are in place for all of our teachers, and that's something hopefully this could potentially build on.
And just one last comment about the digital divide. I guess I'm not sure that I would, I don't know if there was an implication that maybe digital divide is a function of socioeconomic status, but I would guess, I don't think that the learning ability of the student is at all in terms of...
No, 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 no. And if I, if, yeah. And certainly, I did not mean to make that...
It could actually be an equalizer in some...
The tool is, absolutely, yeah. And I don't think anyone there, or certainly myself, was trying to imply that. Digital divide is actually one of those buzz terms in education and technology that just refers to different levels of access across different groups of kids. That's all that was referring to, certainly nothing in regards to their learning abilities or anything of that matter.
Not everybody gets one for Christmas.
Well, and the other piece of that, too, is a lot of our students have some sort of access, whether it be, you know, through a cellphone or something like that, but you also have to take into account the device's abilities versus the goal that we're trying to accomplish. You know, a cellphone is potentially, if you have a 4G cellphone, it potentially is great for information retrieval, but it's, with the exception of maybe some movies and photographs, it's maybe not the best for content creation as well. So there's, I think, several components. There's both the access to the device and web-enabled devices, as well as the device's capabilities.
Anything further? Thanks, Matt. Really appreciate it.
You bet.
It's exciting stuff.
It is.
All right, so the motion's on the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now we can move on to item J, which is on page 34. It is our print shop copier lease purchase agreements, and I'm going to turn it over to Michael after I get it on the... The Board of Education approved the bid submitted by Access Systems for the lease purchase of the proposed Ricoh Pro C651 copier for the district print shop. Can I get that motion on the table? Thanks, Mike. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sue. Okay, Michael.
Thank you. The district, as you well know, has had a longstanding, full-service print shop to the day and time of technology that was common. Well, one thing that wasn't common until the last five to 10 years ago was full color. It was expensive. It was labor-intensive. Up to 10 to 15 years ago, we did have some limited color available, but to give you an example of where it came from, it really was based on an old duplicator machine, where you put a paper master on it and you cranked it to do worksheets. Well, this was an elaborated version of that that would do different colors, and it was automated, obviously, but you would have to put in a different master for each color that you ran through. So if you wanted a three-color mass, three-color document, you had to run it through three separate times with the color on the master the appropriate way. And you could see where that could be quite tedious. Along with that, as the need in the district for certain jobs demanded color or it was preferred for color for PR and selling the district and the public, the only option we had was basically to go to outside printers. And even though we did barter some good prices on that, it was still an expensive way to go. Well, in 2010, and I have that in the, just wanted to note that before I forget about it, this print shop currently is running about 15 million copies a year. So it's very busy. But in 2010, the district did upgrade one, upgrade one of the main production copiers. It was basically at that time that they went away fully from old presses. They were just, they had presses for a long time and then would use a copier and presses, and then in 2010, basically went away from the presses entirely and went to high-speed copiers because they, as technology advanced, it was cheaper and better and more durable and so on. So at that time, when we replaced one of those with a Xerox machine, we were not able to get into full color, but as part of the deal, they gave us a color copier to use. We would have to pay the maintenance, and at that time, we didn't know how fast that production would grow. From that time until now, we're up to around 70,000 copies per month of a color copier. Well, now it's five years old, and it really isn't rated to produce at that level, so it's showing a lot of wear and with the demand of the need internally and externally, because we do do a lot of jobs for area municipalities. We really can't touch the public market, because that's for profit businesses, but we do have the niche to be able to go into municipalities, the city, the county, so on, and other cities that we can offer high-grade color printing and other printing for a fraction of the cost that they can get it from a public business. So we are now combining all of these things and saying, it's now time to make our move. We also, in the last six months, have hired a new person to run the print shop who has experience in a profit business, is anxious to take this and... who has experience in a profit business, is anxious to take this and run and promote business and so on, and basically make a name for us a little bit here. I said we are doing 70,000 copies a month in color right now. Sean Rarrett is the name of the print shop manager. And he is saying, a estimate, a low estimate would be that it would increase by 50%. So, he's expecting that to take off and going out and promoting this ability. You know, because when you look at it and you think about the benefit to the taxpayer, this is doing these kind of jobs for other municipalities. It really does give them a way to save money and get some high-grade service. And I'm not going to give you some prices on the air or here, because I don't think it's fair to do that comparison now. But it is significantly cheaper for us to do it. So, as we went into this process, Sean went, very aggressively looked at several different sizes and models and so on of machines, and visited several different businesses and companies to see things in action and ask the questions, so on, because it's a major investment. But instead of giving you all of the bids that we got, there was about five different companies that we dealt with. I've just presented the last two that we considered as the best choices. And it really was an issue that the machines were very comparable. One of the issues with it was cost per copy. It's just like when you buy a car, they cost a certain amount of money, but then to maintain them is really the long-term cost of the equipment. So, I want the, just to give you an idea of, a summary of the bids, the two bids that are on the bottom, the way those are structured, is the current machine that we have right now is a Xerox Color Cube. And just running the maintenance on that is nine cents a copy. So, if we kept that for another five years, at 70,000 a month, at nine cents a copy, we would be looking at an investment of $378,000. That wouldn't give us any more capability, wouldn't give us, and that machine wouldn't be able to handle it in the first place. But just as a comparison, that's the kind of costs that we have in color right now. So, the bid from Access Systems, the RICO, the machine was 57,300. And they do offer a 60-month lease at 0%. The maintenance on that, which includes the toner, is four cents a copy. So, under the same conditions, would be $2,800 a month or for five years, at that level of printing, $225,300. So, 150,000 less than what we're doing right now. The Canon was a little pricier out of the box of 75,480. The maintenance did not include the toner, and that was five cents a copy. So, with the combined cost of that, over five years, would be 285,000. Now, one of the things that we're also recommending with this is that the state accounting code allows for a separate fund for a print shop, just like food service is a separate fund. So, you can watch revenues, expenditures, are you making money? Where can you find your efficiencies and so on? We are going to do that as well for the print shop. With this, it then isolates it. It shows exactly what's being brought in, exactly what's paid. It will keep track of all of the inventories, and the cost of the equipment can also be supported through there. Now, what we will use that for is saying, and to give an, to give the example, that the last two years, if you put together all the revenues and expenditures of the print shop, we were falling short of breaking even, even of about 20 to 25,000 dollars per year. And the general fund would just absorb that cost. Well, with this ability to isolate all this, it's going to be a lot easier for the print shop to set their prices, to be able to tweak them a little bit, to be able to bring them up to speed of where they need to be to break even or be a profit center. So, it'll just give them the ability to have their own little operation. It's easier for us as the district to monitor that as well, along with the print shop, setting all of their fees and isolating their costs and so on. So, that is the recommendation from the print shop and from the business office, that we are proposing that we would go with the RICO C651 over a five-year lease at a projected cost of 225,300, and that we are going to set that up as a separate fund, so we have the ability to track that.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So, we are purchasing the machine and then also purchasing a maintenance lease? Is that how that's?
Yes. So, that would include all the toner, would include all of the repair work, it would include the parts, which it's, it's just the way that all of the machines are sold.
So, we don't have a choice of just purchasing preventive maintenance and as-needed?
No.
From anybody or just from these companies?
From anybody. These are all high-volume. They're going to need attention. They're going to need preventative maintenance. They're going to need... For instance, we've got one machine that's sitting there right now that's got 40 million copies on it, and it's still going strong.
It's their way of guaranteeing, maintaining service to their customers.
Well, in one, in one issue, they don't want it to be, you know, clunk along until it's, doesn't hardly manage anymore. So, it's also providing for us that we're putting out a good product.
So, at some point, this machine is going to fail? And is there like a warranty or, for the initial $57,000 purchase? Do we expect to get five years out of it?
Yes.
Okay.
At least five years.
Michael, I have a couple of questions. First, where's Access Systems out of?
I didn't bring that with me. I think it's Cedar Rapids.
Okay.
But the, one of the positive sides of this, their main repairman for this machine lives within two miles of Central.
Okay, great. All right, I was wondering that, because we encounter that cost of travel of...
And the other part of this is, to be honest, they wanted a good presence in Waterloo.
Yeah, I had not heard of that.
This is a way for them to do it.
Okay, secondly, then, the current color copier, then, would we sell that or keep it? Or what would we do with the current copier?
It's probably like a five-to-10-year-old computer, that it's really not worth much.
Okay, but as we were figuring, it would still last us five years at 70,000?
No, it's just a comparability of cost.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, then, as far as the access, they do have the capability of handling the 50% expected more each year?
Yes, this is rated quite a bit higher than the 70,000 per month.
Okay, okay. And then audit-wise, having this as a separate entity, does that create any, you know, like with the food service, we had a few issues in the audit as far as, would that be any additional, having it as a separate entity?
Actually, I think when you look at the food service, it's an entity that is in 20 different buildings. Trying to grasp that is a lot more complicated issue than everything under one roof in the print shop with three people handling it and buying, selling, promoting that service. So, I don't see it as any issue at all.
So, if this is going to be turned into sort of an independent business, is there an opportunity for a career path here?
That has always been something, as we went into career academies, as we're now going into CTE, of saying, this needs to be an opportunity for students to come in and be able to work with it, graphic cards, printing, producing, all of those things. Yes, yep, going out and selling. I mean, there's some companies that will come in and say, we not only want you to print this, we want you to design it for, can you help us with that? When Sean was hired, that was one of the things that we talked about, saying, that's something that we see that as a vision for the print shop, and he was, let me add it. So, that was, that was a proponent of, or component of the business that he worked at. Of a lot of customers would come in and just say, we don't want to just print it. I want you to design the book. Tell us what you want. So, he's very much aware of those opportunities. And we see that as a big opportunity for students to be able to do that.
But there's also the operating and business opportunity for the students, that's probably...
And that it's its own fund, that they can see everything in one place should be an asset for that as well.
Assuming he gets the 50% increase that he's anticipating, you're going to be looking for more labor. He's going, they're going to need help, obviously. So, is that the direction he's looking to? And then how does that go into the price that they charge the other city or county?
Well, all that's going to depend on what kind of jobs they get. And is it just bigger jobs of, I mean, to print 100,000 copies and to print 50,000 copies of the same thing doesn't take any more labor.
Right.
You just push the button to a higher number. Are we going to get more jobs? So, that's what's going, remains to be seen. But as...
And then binding labor, that kind of thing?
And as this, the new technology that goes with this, he was kind of excited of saying, you know, I can put in a certain kind of job and set it as a preset. So, then when the next job comes along, I don't have to recalculate everything. It's already there. So, there's going to be efficiencies in new technology as well.
Storing of old files that can then be rerun next time around?
Right. Forms and manuals.
Now, this is, this is all color, so any of the black and white printing would still be done there? But we have existing machines that do that?
Oh, yes. This is, this is at the most 10% of their production.
I assumed that it was a large...
Yeah, and this, we want to see this grow. This is the part that people are asking for, but our black and white is the bread and butter. That's, the machines are going constantly for that.
Is any of that business being sent out to city or county offices?
Yes.
It is, no?
Yep, we do a lot of that for outside entities as well, not just the color.
Do they have this printer around? Can we get it tomorrow? Pending approval, that is.
It's, they're waiting to deliver.
They're waiting to deliver it, all right. So, we don't have to wait for it to be...
They're outside the building.
Anything else?
So, how close are we to be able to use this in that manner? Is any coursework or thing being put together to take advantage of this at this time?
You know, I don't, I don't know right now, but I do know that we would probably look for existing courses that would have something that would have a curriculum match for it. So, and we'd have to go back. I mean, I can't answer right off the top of my head, but I think we would go back to the program of studies of the course catalog and take, take a look for matches on that. It's a great idea.
Or as a project for a business class?
Right. Yeah, I guarantee right now, there are things that we're teaching in our high school that would be a great connect to this. I guarantee that. I can't list them right now, but I know that, I mean, any of the business aspect of it right off the bat. Great questions. Excellent.
Okay, anything further? Thanks, Michael. Tell Sean thanks. We're excited to see what he can do. So, the motion's on the table. All those in favor of approving said motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Which takes us to the next item on our agenda. Michael, I think you get to talk again, maybe, which is item K on page 36. And I see that Cora's here too, funding for the 2015-16 at-risk education programs. And the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the 2015-16 application for funding at-risk education. Can I get a motion to put that on the table, please? Some of, thanks Andrea. And a second? Thanks, Angela. And discussion, Michael?
I guess my question would be is, would you prefer to talk about the financial side of it first or the programming side of it first? Because I can talk about the financial, but...
Let's let Cora talk about the, she's waited that, this long. Be patient.
Good evening. Thank you. Before you, you have the request for funding for the 2015-16 application for our at-risk education. I'm very proud to say Waterloo Schools has a lot of opportunities to offer additional students the availability to stay in school and graduate. Daily, we try and come up with programs and ways to work with our at-risk students, which we want everyone to have opportunity to graduate, and that is our ultimate goal. You have a listing of the programs that the funding is for for the upcoming year. I'm not going to go over anyone in detail for you. Many of them are housed with Expo, and some of them impact all of our students across the district. It's a program that I've worked in, and this district has had for several years. And I do daily see the benefit in ensuring that all students remain in school. I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Cora, I just want to start by saying, when you look at the list of the services that we are offering, I think you're, I just want to echo being very proud of that, because I know that there are people from other districts who need services and are able to use, you know, we really are able to provide a wide gambit, and I think that's really important. And I do think it keeps our kids with us. So, it's really, I applaud you and your staff for all of this, so...
Thank you for the reminder, because we do do 2018 agreements with several districts, offering them opportunities to serve their students at a fee. So, thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
I just want to add on to what Shanley is saying. It also allows us to be a more inclusive school district, allowing kids to remain in regular ed as opposed to being pulled out with the opportunities that they have to be successful in the regular classroom.
Angela, I think I would echo that too, because we are really moving away from a one-size-fits-all. And we have been doing that for quite some time. But this is just an example of, you know, it's not just, we have a program, and if it fits you, great, otherwise, you know, and it's really not that. When we knocked on doors this, this fall, it was, it was a proud moment, I guess, to talk to kids and showing them, here's what we have. It's, you don't think, you don't have to come back and get exactly the same. Here's what we could offer to you. And sometimes the kids didn't know that. So, I mean, that's a good message to us to just keep communicating to kids to that we have a, kind of a menu of options that might connect with them, so...
And I think it's important that the public knows that we have this.
Yes.
Because they read stories in other newspapers, not the Courier, about districts not providing anything for anybody. And then we look at ours and we go, well, we do, so where's our story?
You know, it's not a day that a staff person does not run across a young person, that this still may not meet their needs. And they become, it becomes a challenge for them to ensure that that student also can remain in school. So, I want to say I appreciate the hard work that the alternative ed staff and other building staff across our district do to ensure all students can remain in school.
So, even though Lion's Share is Expo High School, there's two items in here that I'd like to ask about. One is the summer school, and the other is the after-school program, which I assume is flash. I'm not sure.
It is.
Okay. So, first, the summer school program. If we're going to, hopefully, we will change our policy to require no social promotion, particularly at the third grade level. I think one of the things required is that we offer a summer school. But I don't see any difference in the summer school budget.
The difference really, Lyle, is that the state has started providing a supplement to us as well. And so, that comes to us in addition to what we would allocate. So, we are actually spending more on it now. But we have a, the, through the, I believe it's chapter 62, Charles, chapter 62, right? The, there is funding that was appropriated for that.
So, that will be sufficient for us to...
Yeah, we continually monitor the cost, and we're, you know, starting the... Yeah, we continually monitor the cost, and, and we're, you know, starting to, having the conversations about that as well. But right now, it, it has been, but as we get, you know, if we look at some type of a, well, we will be looking at a mandatory attendance. Right now, we have sufficient funds to offer to those who will come, but we don't have all that we want to come that do come. But when it's required, it'll, it'll have to be.
And the next one, I think, there's an evaluation being done now in terms of effectiveness of Flash, and how it should be delivered, and how many days and so forth. But seemingly, that's going to require additional, if, if we offer it, particularly to students beyond those that, that have the opportunity today, in terms of some project-based stuff.
Certainly.
I'm just wondering if that doesn't need to be a little, a change from last year as well.
And right now, too, we do have some, we do what I would call supplement with different funds. For example, if, like Irving has some additional SIG dollars, Cunningham would have some SIG dollars that would be on top of this for some of those buildings. So there, there would be some additional funds. But yeah, if we expand that, we will have to look at the, if we expand that to the project-based learning, or to serving beyond just the literacy and the math that we're serving right now, certainly we would have to adjust that.
I mean, I'm, the first, the first thing is to create more efficiency in that program. But beyond that, it just seems like...
Yeah, and it, it really has, over time, become pretty lean. We're, we're doing more with actually less money on the, and we, we have a better, much better system of tracking attendance, tracking teachers. We have, I mean, it's just, we're just further down the road now than from what we were at the very beginning. I would, you know, we haven't increased it a huge amount, but, and I think that $85,000 just was that, I think there was some, I think Michael and I talked about that, the one year that it was significantly less for the after-school program. I think there was some, some got paid in a different fiscal year, so it's, I'm not exactly sure. That's, it's a little different. It's not like we only spent that much during that time.
That was going to be my question as to why the adopted budget is so much different than the actual...
Yeah. Yeah, we, I think that there's something, oh, and I think there was a, a fund moving or something, if that's, Michael can answer that, I asked that earlier.
With the adopted budget for 1415, really should go back to look at what we spent in 1213 and 1112, because that $85,000 was basically an anomaly for that year, that we were able to use some additional funds for that, that did lower that one area. But it really is more consistent to look at the 337 and the 328,000 that was spent in the two years previous to that, because that's what will continue.
Yeah.
Not the anomaly in the, in the funding that was available for that.
That's just what we paid out of at-risk, but it wasn't the total cost of the program.
The other concern I have with the budget is, if you look back to 1112, and then as it goes into the preliminary 1516, Expo is looking like it's gone up a considerable amount. Is there special things that have been implemented in the last few years that are accounting for the large rise in that budget each year?
You know, I'm going to have to look at that. I think we're serving more students, but I'm not sure, and we do have a greater, and certain things that may not have been in Expo are in there now. I'm not exactly sure about that.
But I would think the mall school is in there.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we have a better smorgasbord, or a better menu of programs, but, and serving more students too. So I'm not, I'm not sure.
We can break that down further.
Yeah, if you'd like to see that, we could certainly do that.
That is information I can actually send you. When we submit the application to the state, we actually have to put the number of students that we served in the program the past two years. So that is something I can prepare to our superintendent and ensure that information gets out to you.
So if you could give us a cost per student for each of these years, and I don't know, well, although I'm not sure how we define student, is this days in the program? Because a lot of these are transient.
It's not all days. It's the number of students who actually attend, earn the credit, and then move on in the level of graduation. Many of the programs that you have here also work with the middle school level, having them, getting them prepared for the high school level. So it's a, as you say, it's a menu of programs that's included here to meet the needs of students.
Now, I was talking specifically about the Expo.
Okay.
The, the 1.5 million in 2011, how many students we served, and I was just interested in, in how we define students.
I do know in 2011-12, the number of programs that we have now clearly was not there at that timeframe. So I will go and, we will make sure that you get that information.
But I think, obviously, looking at this, it's based on the student need and the student usage.
Yes.
Because like the PBDA has gone down, you know, each year from, you know, I mean, obviously 1314, but, you know, when you add the mall school in there, that's under the Expo. So you're paying the mall rent, that's all under that. So I think it's just the amount of programs have increased under that category. That's what it looks like.
So addition to the cost, if we could have the graduation, number of students graduate?
Of, of the at-risk students?
Or the money, of the, of whoever we spent money on?
Yeah, that's a, yeah.
And that's also a, a unique issue, because there are several students that attend East and West, but also use Expo in order to earn their credits towards graduation, and we allow them to return to their home site to graduate. But that information is available for you.
I'm just trying to get a feel for, you know, how effective is it? I know historically the cost per student at Expo is extremely high. And, you know, and I'm sure the graduation rates kind of stay about the same, I think. And so, just trying to get a feel for, are we really spending our money?
But then there's the kids that use Expo that go back to their home school and graduate from their home school.
That's correct.
That's what I mean. It's a little tricky in defining.
Or outside the district, they could even...
The number of students served, but we should be able to do that somehow.
The issue is that we're allowing all students an opportunity to remain in school and seek education, which sometimes take longer also allow for some students. So I, I think the program does serve our district very well. It allows us to keep students engaged, because the price of a student not getting a high school diploma is quite a bit higher, I believe.
Okay, anything else? Turned off my mic. Thank you for being here, Ms. Turner. Thank you, Michael. So that motion's on the table. All those in favor of approving the funding for the 2015-2016 at-risk education programs, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. And that brings us to the fun part of our meeting, where we get to all talk again. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for the superintendent's report.
Certainly. First of all, I, I hope everybody had a, a great holiday break and had a chance to, to rejuvenate and come back. It's hard for me to imagine that we've already finished, concluded half of our school year, which means that I made it half of the school year as a superintendent. So that is a fantastic thing to, you know, I'm really going for the whole year, so that, do not put that in the paper.
That's good to know.
No, it's a, it's a, it's good for all of us, right? It's good. So, that's exciting. So we will gear up for our second half of the school year. So I just also wanted to, I was looking at the calendar, just trying to figure out which things that, you know, you need to mention and want to mention. But I just wanted to, to remind everybody, there is no school on Monday because of a very significant event. We celebrate Martin Luther King Day and, and celebrate the life and legacy of, of Martin Luther King Jr. So I just, I think that, I, I just wanted to give a message, I think, to any students who are watching this, that it is more than a, just a day off. It is so much more than a, a day off. And I just really encourage everybody, I actually, I, I like history, and I like to, I like to read, and so I kind of went back and just started reading some, you know, just some, some history things, just to kind of relive a little bit of some of the experiences. And I think that Dr. Martin Luther King made a huge impact on civil rights and equality in the United States. So I just, I remind students that it is more than a day off. It's, it's a significant day for us. I was, I, I just wanted to, I added this comment, but I just, as we've gone through the night, and really any school board meeting, I'm just reminded how many people support our Waterloo Schools that, that are not necessarily an employee or a school board member. Tonight, we had the Blumiers here, or Susan here, and the McElroy Trust, and just a lot of people really supporting us, even, you know, the, the families that came tonight to help make Waterloo Schools better. So I just, I'm just always appreciative that people are sticking with us and supporting us in, in all kinds of ways. And finally, a follow-up from the December meeting. We had probably the longest conversation about the, the course catalog, the program of studies. And so we are really, really busy right now, kind of enacting that, working with a variety of people. Matter of fact, today, Dr. McNulty and I had a, a long conversation. We went out to Hawkeye and met with the Hawkeye staff, and really had some, it, it was just a really great conversation. And at the end, the deans of the college, some of them were there, and, and they said that they are so encouraged with what we're doing and what we've already been able to put in place for the, the 2015 school year, or for the 2015-16 school year. And so it was just really encouraging. Matter of fact, one gentleman who said that he had been there for quite a while, said that this is the most exciting thing he has seen come out of Waterloo Schools for a while, just the connect. And so I, I think that's really great. Now, we know that changes don't happen easily in some cases, and so we, we know that there are still a lot of questions. The teachers have some questions, and we're going to really work hard to make sure that we answer those questions. Matter of fact, there, there was a rumor out there, I think, that some staff, certain number of staff were going to lose their job, and that is absolutely not true. And, you know, I think part of it is just a, a normal, unfortunately, a normal expected, you know, rumor mill that happens. And so we just want to make sure that we clarify that, but we're really excited about it and the, working hard with that. So, and then I, final thing, just a personal thing. I am a mom on the side, and I have a gentleman at home who has a birthday today. So I'm, after tonight, I'm going to, I told him he's going to be watching tonight, so happy birthday, and I'll be home in a little bit, get the cake and candles out, and here we go. So, thank you.
So keep your comments short, people.
Yes, please.
Come on, we got a national championship, we got birthdays, cake.
The ice cream's melting, right?
Angela?
I always get excited to go first. Just, I just, the only thing that I wanted to say is, what I, I had the opportunity as a school board member to sit on a, an alumni committee for East High, and one of the things that we were able to do in the last year was to open the East High Daily Grind, which will be similar to Java West, and they served their first cup of coffee today. So I don't think that you should run out and go over there and get coffee. I don't know if they're ready for everybody to do that yet, but I know that they did, they did indeed open. So that's exciting.
Do you know where it's located in the building?
Yes. So it's on the second level, you know where the auditorium is?
Yeah.
And then you go, so if you walk into the building, it's to the right, that...
Oh, okay, got it.
So, so that's exciting. Mr. Pace confirmed that they sold their first cup today, so...
That's great. Thanks. It's a sharp cup, I like it. Okay, Sue.
Well, and I just wanted to reiterate tonight that with the students coming in, with any change, there are growing pains, and we knew that, you know, with implementing the IB and the, that we had to do some changing there. And so stick with us, because we're going to have a excellent, excellent product once we get through all the growing pains. Also, reiterating on Martin Luther King Day, there's a really cool event going on at First Presbyterian Church. They're having a community-wide volunteer from 10:00 to 11:30 for your family, for your kid. You're going to go and do lots of different projects. So I'm going to try to get my 16-year-old son to go with me. And, but it's just an opportunity to share in the community about what's going on. And I'm sure there's other opportunities also, but that's one that I know the district has been made aware of. And thirdly, just quick, I know the Ducks and the Bucks start soon, and we, then the sea will come out, the champion between the Bucks and the Ducks.
Yeah, we got to go.
But with, I had a couple calls on the East-West procedures, and just to let the public know that we look at that on a game-to-game basis, and there's lots that go into that planning. It isn't a rash decision that's made really quickly. There's lots of planning, and we will continue to look into that and explore ideas and options to make that work.
Thanks, Sue. Mike?
Great meeting tonight. No, I'm sorry.
You seemed to go so fast.
Yeah. Who's all, what, 10 minutes?
I was working, but I felt bad. I wanted to get here. I feel like a student coming in after Christmas. Like, I haven't seen everybody in, it feels like forever, almost close to a month, but I'm glad to be back. And Jane, I hope you have a great birthday at your house.
Okay, thank you.
Andrea?
Nothing tonight.
Mike?
I just wanted to appreciate the district giving us the Athletic Committee Recommendations Update, and I read through it, and it looks like there's some things are going, moving along with that. Hopefully, we can maybe bring the public in and some of this information at some point in the future. That's all I have. Thanks.
Agreed. Lyle?
Two items. One, I, I did go to the East-West Boys and Girls Basketball Game, and it was a really great athletic competition. Especially the East boys played a very inspired game, even though I've never seen a height disadvantage as great as there is this year between the East and West, West team. But, but I guess I would like to see more attendance.
Yeah.
And I really do think, I, I stayed afterwards till everybody was gone, just to see the, you know, the dynamics of what was happening. And I know you can't predict, but it just seemed like there was absolutely no evidence of anything that would be a problem. So I think we might, should think seriously about relaxing the restrictions a little bit. And my last item is referring to Reverend Martin Luther King Day. If you're going to read one thing, it'd be the letter from the Birmingham Jail. That's, that's an outstanding piece. And it references, you know, his, his motivation, where he's from, references St. Augustine from the fourth century, I think, and St. Thomas Aquinas from the 13th century, in terms of, of motivation and justification of, of why he was in jails. And so, so I think you'll come away with it recognizing that first and foremost, you know, Reverend King was a man of the cloth, and that, and that that really was his, his DMA. And I think we've lost something as a society, because we've dropped the most important title, and that was Reverend, from his name is now Doctor. For a while, it was Reverend Doctor. Now it's just Doctor. So, so it's, just for what it's worth, I think we need to realize that he was a Reverend first and foremost.
Thanks, Lyle. And lastly, I know, because the Bucks and Ducks are going, and I'm a big college football fan too, but I want to take just a minute to thank the Cedar Valley Alliance. Last week, I was able to sit on a panel with somebody from Hawkeye and somebody from the Cedar Falls City Council, and speak to their Cedar Valley Leadership Initiative. It's the old lift. It's called Cedar Valley Leadership Institute. And it was just a nice reminder to me of how important public service is, and how much all of us, you know, really do, even though we don't get paid, we do a lot of work. And it was nice to hear that, and it was, and they were a great audience. And so I just wanted to thank them for including me. And our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on January 26. And in the meantime, I hope everyone can stay warm and safe and all of the above. We kind of had all of winter in one week last week. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And a second, Mike? Thanks. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Chair votes aye.